Okay, I'd like to call to order the CSSU Board of School Directors' regular meeting for February 16th, 2016. So adjustments to the agenda, I have a couple. We're going to add 5.5, the Act 46 Committee Report. Also, we will not need an executive session because this board will be meeting to discuss a superintendent evaluation tomorrow at 5:30 at CSSU. I'd need a forum for that meeting, so I hope everyone, I hope that forum can make it.
Should we let Sandy know as soon as possible?
Well, we're going to have to have a meeting anyway.
I'm in.
You're in? Who can make it tomorrow?
5:30.
5:30.
Might just have a forum, so. You could phone me. I'm just driving from Lyndonville, so if you're in a pinch, Sandy, you can phone me.
Great. Okay, any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay. Audience Communications, hi Kathy. So we're on to 4.1. Presentation's 4.1, Board Training Conflict of Interest. So this was something that was sent out in the mail, just part of our trying this year to have a little focus on board training. Cindy?
So this is a follow-up to the conversation you all had about abstaining from board votes. You asked that I pull together some information about what a conflict of interest would be. So I pulled what's in your policy and then tried to give some examples. You would think this would be easy to research, it was not. No one wants to commit to what an actual conflict of interest is. But if in doubt, certainly you should contact your board chair to walk through that process to see whether there could even be a perception of a conflict. And then the appropriate thing is not only to not participate in the vote, but not to participate in the conversation. It's an overly simplistic presentation of a complicated conflict.
Yeah, the thing that struck me was a board member having directly or indirectly any financial interest in a contract with the school board. That indirectly part is where I think things get gray. What would you suggest, how would you suggest people handle it if they don't think it's enough to accuse themselves, but they would like to make everybody aware of it?
I think you can handle it a couple ways. I think you could either have a conversation with your board chair in advance of the meeting to kind of work through that together, so the board chair could kind of be your test. Certainly doesn't hurt to declare in an opening meeting that you don't believe there is. There's a process under the policy for the board to determine whether a conflict exists or not. I didn't go into that here, because that could almost be a second conversation. But I think, here's what, so for example, there's been mixed legal opinions on who can sit on a negotiating table, for example. And we have two opposing legal opinions on the same person. So the SU board got one and the board member got one that completely contradicts it. So in the end of the day, it's ultimately a board decision, but there's not much you can also do, I mean, aside from censoring a board member for participating. It's really, I think, the bigger issue for the board is the perception of the community and your peers on whether you're voting appropriately.
And there are certainly clear conflicts of interest.
Absolutely. The direct financial benefits are the easy one, it's the indirect that's a little harder. And there's not case law, there's not a lot of guidance.
All right. A lot of people have good judgment and don't try to hide anything and work it out.
The Secretary of State, if anyone's really interested, did a study in 2010, I believe, because they were, the legislature was encouraging select boards and city councils to adopt some kind of conflict of interest policy. And they actually cited that school boards are ahead of the rest of the state on this, because you already have them. The code of ethics will really also guide you a lot of times if you're trying to determine whether it might be a conflict or not.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go on to reports to the board. 5.1, Colt Report.
Sure. We'll start with kudos. This is the time of year where it will end up being the last board meeting for a number of people on this CSSU board. Some of you know this and some of you don't, but it's Jean's last day on the board, which we're, I think most of us just tried to pretend she hadn't really said that. So it's Jean's last day, it's also Kristin's last day on the CSSU board and the Charlotte board. So I'm sure lots of people could jump in and say thank you to both of them. Jean will also not want to read her years of service. She's also being recognized for being on the board for 15 years total, which is just great service and history. And there's been lots of, even if you read through the principal reports, there's other thank yous to both of you, so thanks.
It's been a pleasure. I think public education is just fascinating. You cannot possibly, even after 15 years, there are things I'm still discovering. It keeps changing and it's the best hobby I've ever had. But I think it's time to move on and there's some, especially the CVU board, I think, is believing it have a great principle and great leadership and the board's really strong. And it's just kind of a good time for me to try to be helpful to public education in other ways. But thank you everybody for helping out and supporting me and putting up with my temper tantrums. And I have to actually spend, to thank Sandy. She's always been there for me when I've needed something and she's always on the phone. She's always pleasant and I don't think we thank her enough, so I'm going to miss you, Sandy. Maybe I'll just call you up to ask you things anyway.
Is it okay for others to say something?
So having served as board chair, I know how much time goes into and how much care goes into the role. And Jean has just done a stupendous job over the past couple of years. And we're so grateful for your time and commitment that you've given to our board and the 4,000-plus kids and 900 staff and faculty members in the SU. So thank you very much, Jean.
We're going to say that, because we do need a new board chair. Down next, nay on the work.
And if I could just add, Kristin, you are also going to be so missed.
Oh, thank you.
Because you bring such a balanced, reasonable perspective to this board work and your knowledge that you bring to it. You know, I know that Heinz's work has definitely benefited as well as the entire SU, so thank you so much for your service as well.
Well, thank you. It's a great group to work with and a great staff.
And I don't want to let a moment like this go by, because I think board work of any kind is, for me, so rewarding. And it's because of colleagues like you folks on the board and our administration. And I'm always intrigued by a question you might ask, Kristin, or what's, you know, how's the conversation going? And so I appreciate all you've offered. And Jean and I have had a wonderful relationship of up and down.
That's true.
And I continue to admire your way of not letting something go that can be annoying, but there's a good purpose behind it. And I respect you for that.
Thanks, Jean. We've definitely had our ups and downs. There was a time when the meeting would stop, when Joan and I would agree on something.
We've ended on a high note, apparently.
Apparently. We're not going to quit now.
Well, we're not going to. But that's the thing that we do here. We have the conversations and work and I think learn from one another.
And we have a habit of bringing board members back in for different committees.
That's true. We're looking forward to it. I actually got some email and it was like, I'm going to miss this. I'm going to jump on this right now.
Well, thank you both. A couple of other kudos. One of them is in the report, which is just acknowledging again, CBU's really impressive penguin plunge endeavors. So they're at about $48,000 and counting, and sometimes money trickles in after the fact. And 167 people plunged. And having done the penguin plunge, maybe its second or third year, 167 is more than the entire plunge used to be. And to have that all come from one single community is really great. Couple other kudos. Cole Marino from CBU placed first in the All-State Music Festival Auditions with a perfect score in the scholarship category. And the speech team, coached by Chris O'Donnell, finished second place in Vermont with a number of some individual placements.
Nice.
And there are others as well. Jeff, do you want to share a little bit about Most Likely to Succeed?
Sure. So the piece I wanted to share is that on February 29th, we have our next full day in-service for K-12, and it'll be held here at CBU. And we'll continue to work on the proficiency-based learning pieces that we've been taking on. But also in the morning, we're diverting a little bit from the plan, because there's a new documentary that's out called Most Likely to Succeed. It's an educational documentary. And communities all over the country are showing it to their families and staffs with great results. It's a really provocative look at how much the world for which we're preparing students has evolved far faster than our educational practices and structures have. And there are times when it's really affirming of some of the things that we have taken on and are in the process of addressing and shifting, and also challenging, in that there are a number of structures that still exist that may be serving as significant impediments, given the vast challenge of preparing students for a world in which 65% of grade school children will be working in jobs not yet invented. So it's a really provocative documentary. We're all going to watch it. We're going to have a debriefing activity afterwards, and it's going to frame our work moving forward, not just for that day. But I'd also like to extend an invitation to you all to join us for that. If we like it, we can repurchase it and show it to our communities, and it's certainly something we're considering. And it'll be on, not the most ideal time for most of you, but it'll be 8:30 on February 29th in the CBU auditorium, 8:30 a.m., I should point out, since it's going to begin our day. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. The one other thing we were going to highlight in the report is some work that's happening, targeted right now in Shelburne, but really focused on the entire SU, on bringing MTSS down to the preschool level. Shelburne is a recipient, or CSSU and Shelburne are the recipient of an early MTSS grant, which is part of race-to-the-top funding, early race-to-the-top funding. And the goal of early MTSS is to provide professional development in the hopes of creating an internal coach that will extend our ability to serve kids who are not necessarily identified for special ed at the preschool level, which is a really exciting opportunity for us to take that work that's been a focus for a very long time and extend it down to young children. So Shelley Henson is our project coordinator. We have two external coaches as part of the grant that work with the team, and we are partnering with some community-based, some of our community-based preschool program partners, which is another opportunity to just broaden our reach of the kids that we become aware of, provide support to those programs, so those kids can come in and we know a little more about them. So it's exciting work.
Any other questions on the Colt Report?
Jean, I don't know if this is appropriate time, but I just had a question. With Tony Moran's recent death at CBU, I know we can't talk personal information about that. I don't know if you're all aware, but last week, a St. George student died and he was found dead in his car, and presumably he had been living and sleeping in his car. So I'm just wondering, and maybe this is a question I can talk to you about later, about what at CSSU are at the level of, if we have kids at risk, if it's known by other students that this child is living in his car, why or how could that be brought to someone's attention before something like this? So I know there might not be an answer tonight, but it'd be a question that CBU might want to approach, and if there's an answer, we can share back with the board.
Or a means, you know. I was even thinking something as simple and inane as a suggestion box, kind of like an SOS box in the office or something.
Jeff, can you address that?
Yeah, I can a little bit. Certainly homelessness is something that is so fluid, and students will sometimes leave a residence and be staying with friends or relatives. And we are really not clear on how permanent that is, or how dependable that is. And so we really do largely depend upon our students who have relationships with us to share those types of things. And I think it becomes even more difficult if some of those students are not in the building a whole lot, in alternative programs. We have less contact with them, because a lot of that comes through the guidance and the counselors. And so I think the more specific question I would be asking of the CBU folks is, when students are in alternative settings, what are the structures so that we can have the same kinds of conversations and the same kind of oversight that we do have through the guidance?
Right. And given that there's still two students in the Supervisor Union that are in that home, you know, are they now at risk? And how do we mitigate, if any, or is that our role? I don't, these are just, you know, again, maybe a larger conversation, but just given the shock of what happened in such a small community of people, I feel like, how did that fall through the cracks?
Thanks, Kelly.
Jean, I just have one other question, and this may have happened at an earlier CSSU meeting.
You didn't go back and watch all of the previous ones? Karen, we all do that to prepare.
You gave me the book. The CSSU Inclusion Team, it says that it's going to be led by a new position, and I don't remember in the budget talks of us adding a position, and I just was curious about that.
Yep, I can speak to that. So this is actually an outgrowth of a student, actually a group of students, but in particular, a student need that changed over the course of the year. So this is part of sort of the nature of special education when there are costs that weren't involved in the service plan. So a decision was made by the school involved and the SU in general. This was a student who we were, there's a recognition that the very much higher level of service is needed for this particular student, and we had sort of two options to look at. One of them was a very costly outplacement, costly in the realm of $200,000 per year. And that's for an outplacement for a single student. And this proposal is to meet the needs of that student in a way that also builds capacity within the system. And so the goal is to use that position for the rest of this year to shore up the programming of a very small group of students, but build capacity over the course of the rest of the system. So it was not in the budget, you're correct, and it is one of those decisions that just feels like a better way to meet the needs of a student and also build some capacity around that. And it's also a much less costly decision than the outplacement. So, good question. You didn't miss anything.
You did not miss anything. Have we put that one in there to see who read that?
Do we intersect with other state agencies that might touch that student or family, you know, in delivering other services? And are there things, ways that, either there's collaboration, or there's a burden that's lifted from the school and it falls on an AHS or someone else?
Yep, it's a great question. And in general, anytime we're working with kids with complex needs, there's typically other agency and other agencies involved, either mental health or, it's actually often mental health, because that's what serves sort of either developmental disabilities or more family support services. And so, yes, there are other agencies involved. The costs associated with the education of the student are fully the schools to bear, or CSSUs to bear. And so the costs that you see really aren't something that can be supported by other agencies, although those agencies are involved and collaboration is really important. But it's a good question.
Any other questions on the Colt Report?
I have one question about the health insurance. Because I remember a while ago, when some care health insurance was still an option, and I was doing it, and it was all of you going away, evidently that's not happening now.
They're hoping not to. Last I knew, and Joan, correct me if I'm wrong, is they still need to get permission from the legislature to exist in the format they're producing, they're proposing. If not, then we high-walk always.
Okay. Should we go to 5.2, Second Quarter FMR? Wait, let me wipe a tear from my eye. My last FMR.
I think the FMR is wiping a tear from the eye. The last person who read it in such detail.
Questions to ask. It probably lasts and ever will.
How am I going to understand it without your question?
I think I've trained Bob well.
As a parting gift, we're going to give you a permanent subscription to FMR.
Yes.
So every quarter, you'll have another one to circle and put red marks on and give back to me.
I feel so much better. Anything you want to mention on the FMR?
Well, I could make an executive summary of the executive summary, in case you haven't all read it. The key focus for the FMR for the last three months has been in the arena of special ed. The year started with some significant expenditures in two or three of our member schools. And we've been working hard to minimize the damage in total and figure out a way to make it a little easier to absorb across all five schools. The number that we're playing with right now is net in the neighborhood of $180,000 or so, so by the time we carve it up, the two or three larger schools take a big chunk of it, and the two or three smaller schools, it becomes a very small amount. We were in process of kind of wrestling it to the ground. In front of us is conversations with each of the building principals over the course of the next two months. We fully intend that we'll come to this board in the next quarter with a recommendation on how to deal with it, whether it's an assessment back to schools, portioned out, or whether it's a drawdown of your fund balance as the year ends. But it's kind of the big item that consumes us, both on the report and in the work we're doing.
Mark, look, do you have a question? Come on.
No, good. I knew this was coming.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. 5.3, thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
5.3 Legislative Update, which was actually in the Colt Report, I believe.
Yep.
Page 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
Yes.
Lot going on.
I'll just highlight a couple things, and then folks can ask questions, and Joan, you can help me out as well. Obviously, everyone is aware of the focus of the conversation in January around AGP and where that landed, so that's in there. There's a couple other bills and things happening that are, are or may be, may become relevant. One of them is there are a couple of bills being considered around student discipline. One of them involves truancy, one of them involves the ability to suspend and expel, mostly expel, students. There's been a lot of conversation from our various professional organizations around anything that really ties the hands of administrators to make kind of individual decisions, although everyone, I think everyone understands the spirit behind the proposals around removing kids from the educational environment, tends not to be successful in preventing discipline, but there are times when principals need some discretion. So I think that there are, there is going to be a lot of additional conversation, and I think there is a desire to have a more holistic discussion around sort of the intent behind them. But that's relevant. Another piece that has come out is the PICUS study, Second PICUS Study, about educational adequacy. And for those of you interested in reading it, it's very long, but it has a nice three-page executive summary. And the summary is in here. Essentially, we, in Vermont, spend more on education, and particularly in the area of special education. And that is related to a lot of things, but in particular, student, staff to student ratio, which is, that's not unique to special education, but a lot of emphasis on our reliance on paraprofessionals to provide special ed services. So I'm encouraged, because a lot of the best practices cited in the report are things that we've been talking about for some time and are making some good movement on. And I know you're going to have a conversation today around the marijuana legalization bill, so that's also moving forward. I think that's it. Any questions or, you know, other things that you want to highlight?
I was particularly interested in that PICUS summary in here. I haven't, here we've done to think about the original document. It actually speaks to some, an issue that was raised in a recent Shelburne Budget Development Meeting with replacing Paris with single. So I think the more we have a conversation about this and the more that it gets out into the community, I think we'll have some support for, I think, what we were trying to accomplish in the last budget meeting.
Yeah, I think so too. And I think research has coalesced around a set of things that work in education for quite some time, and now this is additional information coming from different perspectives that's still coalescing around the same types of things. So I think you're right.
Just on that report, is there sort of one main answer to the question of, they raised the issue around identification. So nationally, it's like 12%. We find that 16% of our kids are special ed. I want to say, remember, CSSU being closer to 12.
Yep.
Is that something you speak to, how it is that we end up at 16?
So it's a, there are lots of conversations happening in the world of special ed right now about our identification rate. Interestingly, there is a lot of advocacy happening on the part of some groups actually who think we're under identifying in certain groups, even with a statistic like we identify 16%, and the national average is much lower than that.
Are those advocates who have an interest or a stake in providing service to that population?
I think it's, yeah, I think it's people concerned that kids are falling through the cracks. I think it is concern, or not really understanding our focus on a multi-tiered system of support, which would suggest that you don't need to be eligible for special ed to provide, or to receive services. We identify much higher than average nationwide of students with emotional and behavioral disturbances. I don't know that that would be specifically driven to the 16%. I also know that as we move to a system that identifies kids based on their response to instruction, instead of a discrepancy when you have a learning disability, a discrepancy between your cognitive ability and your achievement, that would suggest that your identification rates would go down, because you're not waiting for students to fail and then find them eligible. So I don't know if that really answers your question. It's an interesting dynamic to have information about what could be considered higher-than-average identification, and yet a real advocacy push to identify more students.
But so you're saying that a lot of that discrepancy falls into the emotional behavioral?
We, as a state, we identify a much higher percentage of kids eligible under emotional disturbance. I don't think that accounts for all of our over-identification.
That's an important part.
But, yeah, exactly.
Just to step off a little bit, what you're saying is, I think it's important when we see these things that are statewide studies, to remember the whole state is not CSSU also. I mean, we should definitely, I think this whole PICUS work is really very interesting. Actually, that's the real reason I'm leaving. I figure it'll take me the next three months to read it, so I don't have any time for it. But actually, I was a committee member on one of the study committees. I went to one of their full-day things, and Bob was at the same one. And it's very interesting, and it was not, I mean, I was very concerned that it would be like bare bones, you know, 45 kids in a classroom, that's what you need for an adequate education. It really wasn't. It's a very forward-thinking model that they've developed, really focused not on saving money, but on 45 kids in a classroom, that's what you need for an adequate education. It really wasn't. It's a very forward-thinking model that they've developed, really focused not on saving money, but on the best outcomes for kids. And so I was kind of astounded. Actually, I was looking at the stuff going, you got too much money in for that. But, so I was actually kind of astounded that the state was above the numbers that it looked like they were rolling up. So, yeah, it's one of the things, as usual, we have to, when this comes up in public, well, we wrote down your budget because you spent, we spend too much money. It's like, hold on, you have to understand another level down. Some of these things that apply to the whole state don't apply to CSSU directly, so. Okay. Anything else on legislative updates? So we did want to recognize board membership. So Joan, looks like you've had 23 years on the boards, your combined board service, as did Lorna, who's not here. You know what? I finally figured out I was never going to beat Joan. I was closing in on her, but I wasn't going to beat her. So, and Colleen, we have you down for 21. So congratulations. And Clyde is the winner of all with 25 years on the board, so thank you very much. So for everyone's service, it's, I often have had the question when people know I've been on the board long after my kids have graduated, it's like, why do you stay on the board? And I think there's definitely a voice for someone with history. You definitely need, it's so important to have parents whose kids are in the school and are connected to the pulse, but it's really good to have a mix. It's also really good to have representation from the parts of the community whose kids aren't at our schools. So it's, I know it's, thank you for all of you who've stuck it out long after your kids are no longer in the schools. Okay, and speaking of which, Colleen, 5.5, Act 46 Committee Report.
I mean, every time I think, you know, every time that next election comes up, I think, oh, is this the year to back out? Is this the year? And then something interesting comes along, it's like, no, can't do it now. I don't, I don't have a lot of copies of this, but probably enough for this table. And we just wanted to make sure that the Act 46 Study Committee was fulfilling its responsibilities to report back to the SU Board and other boards during our session of working together. So what you have in front of you is just a quick overview. I would suggest that you go to the website that's identified there, and there'll be more materials that will continuously be uploaded. As you report back to your local boards, if you can reference this document here, one of the pieces that I really want to highlight, there are actually two pieces I want to highlight. One is we're planning on an Act 46 Night at CVU. Is that what we're calling it, Kevin? Act 46 Night at CVU. And one might wonder why we're not doing it individually in local communities, but we really wanted to bring everybody together and thought that it would make sense to have it here. We'll make it more interactive. We'll make sure that it's broadcast, and we'll have a tape for it. The other piece that I want to highlight is that the, where the report stands right now, it's, you know, the pig and the python, it's got to move through a number of different channels, and it's now with our legal counsel. Our legal counsel is going to have it for a couple of weeks, give it back to us, we'll make revisions, and then it goes to the Agency of Education, Agency of Ed. We'll review it, get back to us, we'll make further revisions, and then shortly thereafter, at a warned meeting, our Act 46 Study Committee will vote on whether to advance it to the next step, and the next step is moving it to the State Board of Education for approval. If that happens, the State Board of Ed meeting is April 19, and at this point, a tentative vote by Australian ballot in each of the communities to be disaggregated by community would be on May 24. That's what we're aiming for at this point. There'll be a lot of communications between now and then. Going up to town meeting, we're not going to do a big push prior to town meeting. We're going to try to have what Mark refers to as deliverables, products that you have in your hand, so that you can hand out a flyer. Also, we'll have our study committee members at all of the annual meetings, you know, your individual community. If questions come up, study committee members will be ready to respond and answer questions. But you'll have product, you'll have a list of website. We'll be putting more materials on that website. Am I forgetting anything?
Can you postpone it by two days? My daughter turns 18 two days later. She could vote.
We're not going to use kids as props. So as far as the, the study committee report, based on the January 19 meeting that we had in here, and further feedback from study committee members, there have been significant revisions to that report, and Mark and Elaine are advising me to just hold off until we get, Chris Leopold's, our legal counsel's, feedback, make those revisions, and then we'll make that more public. If you have an interest in seeing the status of it right now, just ask me, and I'll send it to you, but we're not going to do a wide distribution of that, because it starts getting confusion with the, confusing with the different versions. And, you know, we just want to make sure we're giving the tightest product that we can more publicly. But if you want a copy, and you're not on the committee, ask me for it, and I'll get it to you.
And essentially, you can look on the website, and all the information is there. Because as we've researched questions, we've put information on the website in FAQs and other supporting materials, and all of that has basically been a cut and paste and edit exercise to put into the main body of the report, so.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen and Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
6.0 Discussion Matters, 6.1 Policy. Buses. Did you put this on as another present, Bob?
We're going to name our new one, the Gene Jennings.
The policies we're presenting to the board for discussion tonight are pretty straightforward. There's just some speaking of some of the language, but beyond that, it's pretty boilerplate.
I just have sort of a overall question. I thought that schools had to provide transportation.
No. It is optional.
Really?
Yes.
I had no idea.
That's how I was going to meet the cap. I was just going to get rid of transportation. No, you're not required to provide it, and there are, there are cities and towns that do not or limit the geographical range.
So that's not what you said, Kristin? Oh, as long as you just said within a range or something? So it's not like if you provide it for one, you have to provide it for everybody. It's just...
You could. I mean, where I grew up in Montpelier, if you lived beyond a mile, you got transportation if you didn't. And the theory was you had sidewalks. You could walk.
I think the background thinking is you've got to provide access to inadequate education to all kids, and if they live 15 miles away from school, and you don't have busing, you're disadvantaged.
It'd be a hard argument to make.
It's a little difficult.
There's a lot of things you have to decide before you decide not to.
I just saw it crossed out on one of them, something about by law, you just crossed it out, so maybe it did raise that question. Okay, any other questions about the bus policies? Okay, you'll be discussing those on your, on your regular agendas, too. So 6.2 Marijuana Legislation. So this was just something that was, at the time of our Legislative Breakfast was advancing rapidly through the House, and we thought we needed to get it on the agenda to see if there was any additional information that this board wanted to have, or if this board wanted to send a message in any way to, to the legislation, legislators? About, about that. So what was in the, in your pre-read was Vermont Superintendent's Association's resolution on the potential legalization of marijuana for recreational use in Vermont. So everybody saw that, right?
I thought it was sort of odd that there's, the three-quarters of that was whereas it's horrible and it's detrimental to kids, and Colorado's had a bad experience with it as it relates to kids, that therefore wasn't, that the superintendent supposed that legislation.
I thought that was interesting, too.
Wait, when we had our board chair's meeting, we had one special rule about this portion of the agenda, which we should probably mention.
No, I think, so, so what we talked about was we didn't want to get into a 20-minute debate on pros and cons, because I don't think, we didn't really give everybody the information to have an intelligent discussion, though when we get to our, our next top, our special topic, we may be adding some to that. But, but I think Eric's point, that it was interesting that they chose not to either.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When we had our, if we start having a conversation about this, which is okay, because we just wanted to only talk about it for 20 minutes.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we won't even talk about that long.
Okay, just in case it happens.
That's a good point.
But I mean, is it, I guess, if we thought it was relevant to our kids' educational experience...
It's completely within the realm of us having an opinion. There's no, it's not like we're voting on, I don't know, cows in the Northeast Kingdom or something, right? It's, this is a discussion matter at this point, though, not an action matter.
I think, I mean, just from the perspective of the superintendents, I think it was a little bit more of a, rather than step into the political fray of the, are you pro or are you con, it was simply a, here are the things that we professionally, as an organization, and most of the other professional organizations, certainly the Vermont Council of Special Ed Administrators, the VPA, I believe, are looking at this and probably adopting it as well. But it is more of a, rather than get into that debate, it's an acknowledgement of, these are the things that we think people need to be aware of, and the legislature needs to be aware of if that legislation were passed. So that might not answer the question, but I think that was, that's why it's framed that way.
Joan?
So folks who know Tim Trebek, who's CVU's SAP counselor, and Marco Austin, who used to be here, is at Burlington High School, and they had presented testimony to Senate Judiciary, Senate Health and Welfare, they, with, with a larger prevention group, had a whole day at the State House, and have videos of Dr. Bertha Madras from Harvard speaking about it. But, but to your point, all the information is, is what they're providing, and they, they really gave good, good testimony. And so it's, it's being presented that way right now. It is being looked at in the Senate Appropriations House, has not had it yet. It went through Senate Judiciary, Senate Finance, and now Senate Appropriations. And if it gets voted out of there, it'll go to the whole Senate floor, and then come to the House, and then it'll be determined what happens. If, if a committee takes it up or leaves it on the wall, meaning they won't, they won't deal with it. They may take testimony and then let it lie. So that's, that's what I know now. But our, our district through Tim has been well represented. He's had meetings with the Speaker of the House, and he's come as an SAP counselor. He's come with his professional background, as has Marco Austin. So that's, that's the piece I know right now.
That's good to know. So there's a couple ways we could go with this. We could say we'd like to see this on next month's agenda as an action item to support this resolution. We could decide tonight to support this as a resolution, or we could say, mm, we're not really that comfortable with it, and we'd like to spend time next month on more discussion around particular issues, or to have a task force who drafts something else. Or we could say, we're done with this.
It sounds to me like the board chairs had a lengthy discussion about this, which obviously I wasn't there.
No, no, we had a discussion around the fact that we didn't want to spend 45 minutes on it. That's all we did.
I was just going to say, I would want to know what the board chairs, you know, a summary of their discussion, but if you didn't have a discussion, you can't do that, can you?
The summary was, let's limit this to five minutes.
And I think it's sort of done the same thing. I'm trying to think of other situations where we have weighed in with the legislature in a formal way. To me, it seems like we've had some really big things that we could have done that around, like school funding. I don't know why this would be the one that would trigger us to take a formal action.
I was just thinking the same thing. We didn't even do something like this for Act 46, actually.
Yeah.
My, my view is consistent with that, that this is really a, a subject for the VSBA to address and to represent us through that vehicle. If we, as a SU Board, have something to say, we should work through the VSBA. We are the biggest SU in the state, so maybe we carry a little more weight than others, but VSBA is our advocate on all these things. And I would, if anything, I want to know what their viewpoint is, and then support or oppose that.
Nicole was working with this when I talked to her about it. Okay, I mean, it sounds like a, kind of a majority of the board. CVU may take this separately, but that would be their board decision. And I guess I would just recommend that if you feel differently, and you would like to weigh in, or you do, you do have this, and you can contact your own legislators on this and, and deal with it in that manner.
I appreciate the Superintendent's Association not wanting to step into the political fray. That's how we're going to couch this. I think as stewards of school, looking at the best interests of children, I would like to see us, as a body, go on record stating adamantly opposed to the position that I want in the best interest of kids. Do whatever you want. That's my statement.
Yeah, actually, Bill, I feel pretty strongly the same way, is that we should take a stand, but I feel when the rest of the body does not, so.
Well, I don't have a, I can have a stand.
Yeah. So how would you like to proceed? Should we put this as an action item next, at the next meeting?
Should we do that in the form of a motion, to put it off?
Gene's just punting.
Yeah, I'm not going to be here, so I don't care. We don't usually vote on agenda items. I mean, normally, it would be the board, you know, the, the, I know at CVU, we had a more formal way of putting things on, by having at least two people who wanted it, and I've heard two people who want it.
Well, I think, though, as Keith said, though, it'd be good, I mean, I won't be here either, but to have, you know, what the VSBA's position and what they're doing available in advance of that meeting.
So what we can do is, I can, we, we can have Megan take a note, too. Put it on the agenda for the next time, and if the body does not choose to take it up as an action next time, you don't take it up as an action next time. And maybe by that time, it'll become a moot point, or not.
And Keith's point, maybe become informed about what the VSBA is saying, what they're, what they're saying about this and how they stand.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, when I talked to Nicole a week and a half ago, they were, they were following the VSAA one. They hadn't, they didn't have something different, but I was just wondering, do anything have changed? So, but, but maybe it will by the next time we get together. Or you guys get...
Should one of us contact Nicole, or will Megan contact Nicole?
We can follow up to see if they, because it's possible that they've already kind of, that they're in the process of formally adopting. I know that's what our professional organization is in the process of, so we'll follow up on that.
Cool.
Great. All right, thank you. So Action Matters, 7.1 Schedule the Retreat Date. Recommendation is May 26. Can I have a motion to schedule a retreat date for May 26?
Sure, move.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Any discussion around this? Those that are Friday?
It's a Friday. It's a Thursday. Why on a Thursday versus a Friday and Monday?
So last year, it was a Thursday, but mostly because there had been a conflict last year with the Friday professional development thing that was going to pull a lot of administrators away, and I think the thought was having it on a Thursday prevents that sort of Friday afternoon attendance dwindling in the afternoon. And so I think that's...
That's never going to go away.
Do we have data on that?
We had better afternoon attendance last year than the year before.
Yeah, it's Memorial Day weekend.
Oh, yeah, Memorial Day weekend, and that, we can't have it Friday.
So Thursday to 26.
Thursday to 26.
Can all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. 7.2, can I have a motion to approve the leave of absence request from the board material?
Sure, move.
Thank you, Mark. Second?
Second.
Kevin, any discussion? Kevin, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Seven two-two, approve the new hire? Just in the package, and this is.
Yep, it's, should be in the packet. And this is the position that, the inclusion director position.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I totally missed it.
It wasn't, I didn't see anything in the packet.
In the signature folder.
I looked all the way through the packet.
Is it, it's in here, okay.
Well, it's up to you. Would you like to tell us who, who it is, and?
I can.
We can try to move it forward? Okay, so, why don't we do that first?
So, the person we would like to move forward is Laura Smith, who is currently a part-time administrator assigned in Heinsberg. And she, we would like to move her name forward to be the director, inclusion director for the rest of this year.
Is she picking up the other half?
Picking up the other half, correct. So, not, not leaving her existing position.
Anybody have any questions? I assume since she's already here, she's licensed appropriately?
She is appropriately licensed, yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the hire of Laura Smith for the inclusion director?
Sure, moved.
Thank you, Kristen. Your last motion.
So exciting.
Don't cry. Are you good? Thank you, Kelly. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Mark, second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Confirm next meeting date. Remember tomorrow's superintendent evaluation meeting. It's the most important thing this board does, so make it, if you can at all rearrange your schedule to get there.
And Gene, what happened last year at our superintendent's evaluation meeting?
I suppose remember that?
We didn't get a quora, and you were very disappointed about that. And I don't want to let you down on probably what is actually your last official meeting.
That's a good point. Thank you, that means a lot to me. It's serious, because otherwise it means we have to call around or try to get people.
So, to confirm, five-thirty at CSSU.
Five-thirty at CSSU, and Elaine will be there. Back from her vacation.
Just having Elaine there is enough withdrawal.
I know, I wouldn't want to be there to talk to Elaine. And then the March fifteenth regular meeting, Kristen and I will be at Pub Somewhere. And with that, we're gonna move to our common topic. Dave, would you like to introduce our speakers?
Sure, sure. I first met Bob Vick when I moved into my house eleven years ago, when he was my neighbor. Bob is the head of the, it's the Howard Center, correct? Yeah? And we had a topic that came in front of us that was, we'd like to talk about addiction in Vermont. And we were gonna, you know, trying to look for speakers. And I have a, well, my wife is a prescriber of Suboxone. And along those lines, I asked her, I said, who's the best person to talk to our group about addiction in the state of Vermont? And without hesitation, she said, I would call Bob Vick. And I'm really excited to have Bob come here and speak, because he has a broader view outside of the schools. And he deals with an issue that touches almost every one of us. I'm sure all of us know someone who's been touched by what's going on in the state of Vermont, so much so that the governor made it his, subject of his keynote address a couple of years ago. So, thanks for coming, Bob, I really appreciate it, and I can't wait to hear it.
So, is there a place that I can actually sit? Is it okay?
Bill, let's move over. Thanks, Bill.
I thought you were teaching.
Coming into a school, I just suddenly feel like a child.
It's frightening, isn't it?
You know, my grandchildren are like walking, cleaning dishes. And so, I picked up a cold, and I'm assuming my last name is, losing my voice. And I remember in school, when I would bring candy, I was, oh, Bob, you brought candy? I assume you have enough for everybody. So, I want to apologize, because I don't have enough for everybody. So, thanks for giving me an opportunity to spend a few minutes with you talking about addiction in Vermont. And I really am gonna focus on opioid addiction, because I think right now that is the issue that's challenging us as a community, as individuals, as families, and as a state. And with all due respect to many elected officials, it's, it's, like many things, mired in the challenge of trying to accommodate multiple perspectives. And I was listening to a little bit of your conversation around the malware legalization. You know, that, that, too, is, is an issue that relates to addiction, and has got to accommodate a whole wide range of very different views. So, let me start by, I have a few notes, and I'll try not to throw too much data at you. But I think, you know, providing some analytics lends a kind of scientific perspective to it. But we, I hope, will remember that this is, this is really an issue that affects individuals. And somebody who you probably don't often hear quoted, I love this quote, Joseph Stalin. And, you know, he said, when, when a thousand people die, and I think he actually said ten thousand, it's a statistic, but when one person dies, it's a tragedy. And when we look at the impact of opioid addiction on the state of Vermont, we are compelled to be looking at broad numbers, and that sometimes can take us away from focusing on the individual tragedy for the individual, for their immediate family, for their friends, for their community, for our state. So, I'm sure as a school board for education, that you're aware that today is National Innovation Day, which was actually put in place to encourage children to be innovative. And I'm reminded that one of the things that children really don't have to be taught, but they seem to all learn it themselves, is how to spin around and make themselves dizzy and fall down. And the psychological research that's been done on children spinning speaks to the issue that as human beings, we are all oftentimes in the process of thinking, of finding alternative states of consciousness. And we all do that in different ways. Some people do it by taking drugs. Some people do it by finding that sweet spot in a sport, or bicycling at bizarre hours of the day and night. All year long. Some people find it in religion or in spirituality. And so, one of the things to keep in mind is that when individuals take drugs, they're probably doing it for one of two broad reasons, and this is, you know, a very global statement. Either they're seeking some alternative state of consciousness to feel differently, or they're doing it to relieve pain. So, that's, that's one point. Let me just get my notes here. We are all confronted, as I suspect you've probably discussed in other meetings, with being bombarded with media messages about consuming some substance to make us feel differently, to make us feel better, to not feel negative things that we feel, whether it's physical pain, depression, other emotional pain. If anybody watched the commercials during the Super Bowl, opiate-induced constipation, got a lot of press, which our governor has taken an issue with. And so, it shouldn't be surprising that we have lots of individuals, children and adults, who are taking drugs to not feel pain. And the fact that some of us find themselves in trouble after having taken those substances, it really, it shouldn't be a surprise. We live in a culture in which taking substances is normative. And then, finally, and most significantly recently in Vermont, is the promotion of prescription pharmaceuticals by pharmaceutical manufacturers. And Vermont actually is one of the states that settled with one particular manufacturer around how they promoted a particular pain medication, suggesting that it was less addictive than other medications that were available. Physicians began prescribing it. And physicians clearly are struggling, because their agenda is to relieve pain. And I can tell you that about three years ago, more than fifty percent of the individuals who are entering treatment for opiate addiction in our clinic began their addiction with a legitimate prescription for opiates from either a physician or a dentist. I was just in a meeting this morning with a colleague, a friend, who just had hip surgery. His right hip replaced up at UVMMC. And he was talking about his recovery. He was actually mentioning another friend that we know, they were sort of buddies bedside by bedside. And my friend, Joe, so I said, so did they prescribe OxyContin for you? And he said, yeah. I said, how many did they give you? He said, fifty. So, we walked out of there with fifty, and I said, how many have you taken? He said, I took two. And he's got forty-eight sitting in his medicine cabinet. Our other friend, who was his buddy, bedside buddy, who also had histories, was having a much harder time, and was taking a lot more medications. So, pain relief and the implications of how that's marketed clearly has a societal, social impact on how we react in our community. So, a little system history. There were no medication-assisted treatment programs, I'm gonna talk about with the AR in a second, in the state of Vermont prior to two thousand and two. And Howard Center opened the first methadone clinic in two thousand and two in collaboration with the University of Vermont Medical Center and the PBM Medical School. And at that point in time, we had a hard cap on the number of patients that we could serve, and that was seventy patients. And we filled those seventy slots probably within two and a half or three months, and have had a waiting list ever since. Today, how many people do we have in? Eight hundred and ninety-four people. As of yesterday, we had a hundred and eighty-seven people on the active waiting list. So, that means that they have called, they've been screened to be determined to need that level of care. I'll talk about that in a second. And they have agreed that they will continue to call us every month to tell us that they're still interested in being in treatment, so that we know that they're available to come in. When we opened, the governor was opposed to having medication-assisted treatment in our state. And in part, I think, he didn't tell me this, but I, he did talk about the fact that he, when he was in medical school in New York, he had observed methadone clinics in the state of New York. And he was really concerned about the impact that they would have on the community. So, that's relevant for, for two reasons. But the most significant is the current epidemic, which I think everybody in this room has heard about, probably more than you want to, in the newspaper, on television, in the radio, in conversations, in your social engagements. This epidemic is actually worse than the opiate epidemic that this country went through in the eighties. So, why is everybody hearing about it so much now, and we didn't have this conversation in the eighties? Because in the eighties, it was primarily limited to people who were poor, who were minority, and who lived in the inner city. And because, in part, of the prescription relationship to the opiate epidemic in this country, all of a sudden, we have middle class, upper-middle class, one percenters, whose families are being affected personally by this particular epidemic. And these are people who have a voice. These are people who know how to reach out to a legislature. And they are people who are not used to not being heard and having things changed. So, there's a economic relationship to this current epidemic that we're experiencing. There's a political relationship, and then there's the clinical relationship. One of the things that our patients tell us over and over again is, opiates are great, because they relieve pain, and not just physical pain, they relieve their emotional pain. And as we work with them to try to get them to think about their other alternatives, there's a biological, a legitimate biological connection to how their body has adapted to this particular substance. So, let me just tell you a little bit about opiates. And all opiates are the same. So, if you're talking about heroin, it's the same as talking about tramadol or OxyContin. They're all opiates, they work on certain receptors in the brain. When they hit those receptors, when people take the drug for pain, so if you had hip replacement surgery, you're told you're gonna take a pill, and it might be every twelve hours. And when you take that pill, it blocks pain receptors in your body. And you've, I don't know, people want to admit it. If you've ever had a dental procedure or a medical procedure, you might have been prescribed opiates. I mean, I have. And you feel euphoric, mildly euphoric. So, people who are taking opiates by abusing them get to a point at which they want to get high. They want that peak experience. And there's an expression in the field called chasing the dragon, because that first peak experience will never be repeated. But they do get high, okay? They, their consciousness is altered substantially. But when they abuse the drug, it's a very short-lived experience, and then they come back down. And then they want to experience that again, and so they take it, and they go up again, and then they come down. When we work with them in medication-assisted treatment programs, a lot of folks are saying, well, you're just replacing one opiate with another. You're just giving them one legal drug. We are giving them a legal drug. But people take legal drugs for all kinds of things appropriately. When they take methadone, or when they take buprenorphine, buprenorphine, or suboxone, think about, there's two extremes. There's getting high, and there's this euphoric experience. And then, when you're not taking that drug, and when you have become physiologically addicted, you're feeling what's called dope sick. And if that lasts for any significant period of time, it is a horrible, horrible physiological experience to go through. And for some people in this room who are old enough to remember, there was a movie in the fifties called A Man with a Golden Arm. Anybody old enough? No, a lot of young people here. And it showed somebody who's going through withdrawal from heroin addiction, because they have a short half-life when, when they take the drug to abuse it. When we provide methadone, or suboxone, or buprenorphine, it is titrated to bring them a place, to a place where physiologically, they're not getting high, and they're not getting dope sick. So, they are effectively normal. And that's the goal that we work to achieve, because more than fifty percent of the patients that we work with present with some other co-occurring mental health disorder. So, it's complex. People are taking this to relieve pain for some reason, whether it's some unresolved trauma, or some other psychiatric or clinical condition. And so, our goal is to stabilize them, so that we can provide a whole range of other services that we provide on a day-to-day basis, in order for them to feel that they can move on in their life, that they can become participatory systems, as members of our community. And it's challenging. It's very, very difficult. And relapse is part of the process. So, years ago, in Vermont, alcohol was far and away the primary drug that was men- So years ago, in Vermont, alcohol was far and away the primary drug that was mentioned as a drug of abuse in the treatment system. Today, that's just no longer the case. Opiates has become the primary drug of abuse. So that's, let me mention that. How many people do we have in Vermont? Does anybody want to fathom a guess about how many people you think are struggling with opiate addiction in the state of Vermont, or in Chittenden County? It's a shy group.
Given you said you had about a thousand that were either in treatment or on the waiting list.
Yeah.
Obviously, the number is much higher.
Right.
Because they're at a point where they're asking for help. So I was doing some calculations based on six hundred and forty thousand people in the state. It's pretty frightening.
Are you a mathematician?
No.
So, there is nobody that really has a hard and firm answer. Now, when I've talked with folks and testified on this issue, I've talked about using the iceberg as a metaphor. And so for me, the part of the iceberg that's above the waterline, those are the folks who are in treatment. The folks who are on the waiting list, that's how much of the iceberg you can see when you look down into the water. So how much of the iceberg is left? So if I stay with that metaphor, and for anybody who might be a scientist, and you're going to correct me on the hard numbers here, but depending on what data you look at, somewhere between eighty and ninety percent of the iceberg is below, is below the waterline. So when we look at those numbers and calculate that, and about eighty-two percent of the clients that we serve in our program come from Chittenden County, so using that number, about five thousand people in Chittenden County. Depending on the eighty to ninety percent, we're probably looking at over fifty thousand people in the state of Vermont.
Do you have an median age?
I will get there. It's a good question. It's a great question. So, the last youth risk behavior survey that was done for this area, the questions got blurred a little bit. If you look at some of the older surveys, they ask them in different ways. But the most recent one, they asked whether people abused a prescription or a stimulant. They combine stimulants and depressants. And you had over a hundred students. If you look at the percentage and multiply it times, I think, what, you have eleven hundred students? You have over a hundred students here that have acknowledged that they've used those drugs. It is both a visible problem and a hidden problem. And that's, that presents part of the challenge. So we also operate a program called Safe Recovery. It's a harm reduction program. So we work with both individuals who are actively abusing opiates. And we provide them with testing for Hep C and HIV. We provide them with clean needles because we want to reduce the transmission of those diseases by virtue of sharing needles. And we have, right now, thirty-seven hundred people who are coming to our program getting clean needles. And that number has been increasing by forty people every month over the last few months. And some of those people are actually on our waiting list. But a lot of the folks are not yet at a place where they're ready to say they want to change what it is they're doing in terms of abusing drugs. Right now, in Vermont, we have just under five infants per thousand of being born opiate addicted. It's seven times the national average. There are, I know I put this here someplace. What is it? I think we have fifty, let me find this number. I think there's fifty women currently being treated up at UVMMC who are postpartum, that have infants who are born opiate addicted, that we haven't even gotten right now. And we have, we served this past year fifty-eight women who came to us and are pregnant. So this is not a, this is not a prob, you know, I know that this is not a, this is not a happy conversation. We are confronted with a considerable challenge facing our community. So, one of the other things that I did pick up when I was looking at the youth risk behavior survey for this area was thirty-four percent of the students, so that would be about three hundred and seventy-four students, admitted to smoking pot. And twenty-four percent, or two hundred and sixty-four admitted doing so in the last thirty days. So, you know, my wife was a guidance counselor in Williston, and she was in Shelburne Supermarket, living in Shelburne. And a friend, somebody we know, came up to her and was berating her because I, obviously this person knows who the boss is, was berating her because I had not taken a public position on the legalization of marijuana. And it's a, it's a very complex issue. It's on so many different dimensions, it's very complex. And no one is talking about the idea that legalization should include youth, youth use, use by youth. But one of the things that we know is the heroin that's on the street in Vermont today is very different than the heroin that was on the streets twenty years ago. In the same way that the pot that's on the street today is very different than the pot that was on the street, you know, when I was in San Francisco during the Summer Love. And we know that it is pure enough, the heroin is pure enough, that it's dusting some of the marijuana that's being sold on the street. So we know that there are some young people who are going to Joan and buying their pot, and they're feeling really good. And then all of a sudden, they come to Bob, and they want to buy some pot from me, and I give it to them, and they're not getting the same high. And they go, what's going on? You know? So they go back to Joan. And then Joan says, well, you know, I've been tweaking it up. And I think, you know, you might want to try to snort this now because, you know, you'll get, you'll get the high more directly. It's something to be thinking about when we have a black market that we have no ability to control. And I'm not saying this to endorse or not endorse legalization, I'm just saying it's one of the factors that plays in, and it's one of the factors that plays into when do people start taking opiates? When do they start abusing them? So I'm going to get there. One of the things I want to point out is medication-assisted treatment is not the only treatment. Part of the challenge is because it's a best practice, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration of the federal government has defined it as a best practice. It is, for many, many individuals who are addicted to opiates, the way in which we should be addressing this problem. But the reality is, everybody doesn't need to do it. And speaking about the Summer Love, so there was a study done on returning Vietnam vets. And about twenty percent of vets coming back from Vietnam self-described themselves as addicted to heroin because they were using it when they were over there. And so they weren't allowed actually to come back to the US until they were medically detoxed. So they were detoxed off the heroin, and then they shipped back to the US. They did a study, and only five percent of those individuals who came back to the US who had no treatment relapsed and began using heroin back in the US. So we know there's an environmental factor that plays here. We know this, this is the same thing with smoking. It's the same thing with alcohol. So, embarrassed to admit it, but I used to smoke. I smoked for a lot of years. And all of the things that I did when I smoked became triggers for me, so I always smoked when I was in the car. So every time I'd get in the car, I'd go for the cigarette. You know, where's that cigarette? And part of the challenge is, most of the folks that we work with, they're not in a position to change their environment. They are living in it. They go back to it. One of the challenges that we have is we're required by the federal government to prioritize two populations. We have to prioritize pregnant women, and we have to prioritize injection drug users. And so that creates a challenge for the waiting list because if you happen to be snorting and you're on the waiting list, you get, keep getting bumped back. One could say it's a somewhat bizarre incentive for somebody to increase the way they're taking drugs to injection so they move themselves up on the list. We have had women who have told us that they got pregnant in order to bump to the top of the list. We have women who we're treating because they bumped to the top of the list, who are living with a partner who's still active using, actively using, but is not pregnant, and so therefore doesn't bump to the top of the list. So they're going home, they're trying to get clean, and they're going home every day. And everybody wants us to prioritize their clinical population. The Department of Corrections wants us to prioritize their population because in most cases, I mean, there is a high, a relatively high use, and one could argue what that really means, you know, what does relatively high really mean? There's a significant amount of illicit drug use in the facilities of the Department of Corrections. But a significant number of individuals do get detoxed. We will continue, if we have somebody in treatment and they end up in Corrections, we'll continue to serve them if their sentence is under ninety days. If it's over ninety days, Department of Corrections detoxes them. When they come back out, they are incredibly at high risk for an overdose because their body has adjusted, and then they go back, if they were to go back to using what they were previously using, they're going to find themselves in a situation in which they're likely to overdose. So they want us to prioritize their population. The Department of Children and Families is working with families, moms mostly, but dads as well. They want to try to work when it's appropriate for family reunification. They're overwhelmed with trying to place infants right now. They want us to prioritize their population. If, as I'm sure you've heard, if everybody is a priority, or if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So you have to, we're making horrible, hard choices. I was in a meeting with the governor, I don't know, about a month ago. It was a month ago because I, I was on vacation for a couple of weeks, and it was great. And coming back has been an experience. And so he's, you know, he had, there was a room full of people, and he was saying, this waiting list situation is unacceptable, and we have to address it. This is like people who show up in the ER having a heart attack, and you're saying, you know, sit in the room and we'll get around to you next week. And I said, you know, I probably didn't say with all due respect, but I did say, I think while it is life-threatening, I think we need to see it more like, these are individuals who need an organ transplant. And many of them, so if somebody's, you know, using it high doses, if they're injection-using, if they're sharing whatever, one could argue that they need to be higher up on the list of organ transplants. But, and we know that, you know, if you can't get an organ transplant when you need it, you're going to die. But the reality is, we can't serve everybody. We cannot keep up with this based on the, on the pace that we're being asked to meet. So, there was also a similar Canadian study to the Vietnam thing. Right now, there are six methadone hubs in the state, which means we dispense medication. So clients come to us, we observe them taking the medication, they're required to go, undergo observed urinalysis, which means, the expression is C-stream. We need to see the sample emerging from your body to know that we're getting it. Why do we want to do that? Because we want to make sure, A, that we're having a positive impact on people, and B, that they're not taking other substances which, combined with the medication that we're giving them, can kill them. And depending on the medication, we have to go through different medical protocols. So if somebody's going to be on methadone, and about sixty percent of the patients take methadone. And the balance, take buprenorphine. There's another drug being used in the state, but we're not really using it right now very much. So, right now, between ninety and ninety-seven percent, we do random urine screens on everybody. They're clean for illicit opiates because we can tell the methadone from other opiates. They're clean from cocaine, and they're clean from benzodiazepines. So, as some of you may remember, a couple of years ago, we were opening a clinic in South Burlington, and your counterparts in that community had a problem with the location that we were proposing. And I remember doing a presentation, and I talked about the ninety, ninety-seven percent clean rate. Somebody said, well, then that means you got three to ten percent that you're not, you know, that aren't clean. Well, that's right. But these are the folks who are in treatment. These are the folks who are trying to get well. These are not the folks that are out there, whether it's five thousand in Chittenden County or twenty-seven to fifty-five thousand statewide, who are still untreated, who are out there that you don't necessarily know about. About a third of our patients move from our service, our intense service, to what's called spokes, community-based physicians. There are two hundred and forty-five licensed in the state of Vermont. But there are not enough physicians who've stepped up to provide suboxone to these patients, and so they're stuck in our level of care. So they're getting a higher level of care than they need, and they're taking a slot away from somebody. It's like somebody, you know, who had a heart, a heart bypass surgery, and they're still sitting in the ICU because there's no place to move them out to. So, to get to your question about sort of who are we serving, and one little bit of demographics, eighty-two percent are from Chittenden County. I correct myself. The number of pregnant women that we treated last year was eighty-eight. Right now, it's forty-nine percent of our clients are men and fifty-one percent are women. I mean, I've been, you know, look, I'm an old guy. I have no hair, and what I have is gray. And I've been working with this population for like forty years, and I've been working in substance abuse that long. And I can tell you that historically, the ratio was almost always sixty-six, thirty-three. Sixty-six percent men, thirty-three percent women. This particular drug has taken an inordinate and exceptional toll on women in our community. The average age of our clients is thirty-five. And that, that range is from nineteen to sixty-nine. The average age at first use, remember the, keep in mind the thirty-five number. The average age at first use is eighteen. The modal age of first use, the number most mentioned, sixteen. The range, and this is five to forty-eight. We have a significant number of individuals, what's significant for me on this topic, more than one, but it's substantially more than one, who get their first opiate illicitly from a family member. Let me see what I got. So, we currently have about ninety-two percent of our clients, ninety-three percent of our clients are covered either by private insurance or Medicaid. So, about four months ago, the governor, when he was talking about the enhanced enrollment in the Health Connect Program, was, I think, proudly able to say that we have, as a state, reduced the uninsured population to about three percent statewide. And that's true. So what does it mean that we have seven percent of our clinical population is, has no insurance? It's because these are individuals whose lives are so dysfunctional that they are not in a position to get insurance. And then even if they do, and they have a copay, and they don't make the copay for one month, they get dropped off the insurance, and they can't get that on for nine months. And so these folks live outside of our healthcare community. And so it is necessary that community docs play a more active role in working with this clinical population. I will tell you in the last- I will tell you, in the last four months, we've been working very closely with the University of Medical Center. They've expanded the number of their physicians that are going to be working with this population. And our goal is to get and ensure that every patient that we're seeing has a primary care Sixty-two percent of the patients that we treat who are pregnant, only sixty-two percent have had a primary care visit in the last month. So we can encourage, we can encourage, we can encourage, but we can't force these women to follow up medically. It takes about seven days from once somebody gets off the waiting list for them to get their first medication. And our monthly admissions have ranged from a low of three to a high of forty-seven. So it all really depends on our staff capacity at any given moment in time and the clinical complexity of the patients who are presenting. In the first half of the year, thirty-nine percent, and so I'm giving you last year's numbers because that's, we've got the most recent data, thirty-nine percent of the individuals on our waitlist were injection drug users. Now that number's up to fifty-eight percent that are injecting. The average wait time, four hundred and thirty-five days?
You're like four hundred?
Four hundred and thirty-five days. But that range, in the last three months, we brought that down to a hundred and seventy-one days. It's half a year, you know? For somebody who's living the life that they're living, it's, it's an eternity. It's absolutely eternity. Everything we know about drug treatment said, says, when an individual is ready, you've got to be there for them. So, let me talk about overdoses for a minute. So that's one of the horrible aspects of this particular disease, is that when individuals take the drug, they can overdose. And in two thousand and four, Vermont had thirty-six opiate-related overdoses, of which six were heroin. In two thousand and thirteen, we had sixty-eight overdoses and twenty of them were heroin. And let me tell you, heroin on the street is cheap and, you know, I spend a lot of time talking with my colleagues in law enforcement and they completely understand we are not going to arrest our way out of this. Every time you read the newspaper or see a news story about a dealer being busted wherever in our community, they know that the next day, there is somebody on that same street corner. And I can walk down looking how I look, an old guy in, in multiple places in our communities and I can buy heroin without any difficulty at all. In our Safe Recovery Program, we've distributed two thousand Narcan kits. So this is, this is a medication that has no negative consequence, law enforcement now is carrying it, EMTs are carrying it. And if somebody is experiencing an overdose and they're administering this medication, it reverses them immediately because what it does is it goes to the opiate receptor in the brain and it basically pushes the opiates out and locks on. And we can account, our Safe Recovery Program, which by the way, is losing its federal funding, can account for four hundred overdose reversals. So that's what, almost twenty-five percent of the number of kits we distributed. And we distribute them to users. So if you're with somebody and you're both shooting up and somebody goes into an overdose situation, you can, you can help them. We give it to parents who have children that are struggling with opiate addiction and their worst fear is that they're going to walk into their bedroom or down into the basement or in the living room and find them in a horrible situation. And part of the challenge is that, you know, we give folks one kit. So there are medications that are being used to adulterate the heroin that's on the street. And individuals who are taking that medication sometimes require three and four hits of Narcan in order to bring them around. And when they come around, if you were to talk to folks in EMT services, they would tell you, hi. They would tell you that when these folks wake up, they can be potentially violent because they're like, where am I? What happened? And they start swinging. It's a horrible, horrible situation to be in. So, what's the good news? And, and there is some, but we're only partway there. I, I truly believe that in the last year, year and a half, the community has really come to accept that drug addiction, whether we're talking about opiates or cocaine use or alcoholism, is a disease. It's not a moral failing. It's not about people just stopping doing it. And so the discrimination and the stigma that we experience is less than it was. So when I was a little kid, this is, if you haven't followed, this is where I started, remember, when I came in? My parents wouldn't use the word cancer. There was like something, it was like you didn't, you didn't talk about it. And I remember my mother saying, you know, so-and-so just died from the big C. And if you look back in the obits, it's a bizarre fact of getting old that you read the obits. If you look back in the fifties at obits, you rarely, rarely saw an obit that said, so-and-so died after a lung and valiant struggle with cancer. Today, it's normative. I mean, almost daily, if you're, you know, this, if you get the Burlington Free Press and if you choose to read it, you know, there's three or four, five obits in there every day and often one, if not more, talks about that very fact, that somebody died after a lung and valiant struggle with cancer or something else. And there's starting, just starting to be, families who are willing to put in there, my son or my daughter died after struggling with opiate addiction. And it's painful. And I did a, I did a presentation at a private school about a year ago and I was talking about this very issue of stigma. And we have clients who, when their landlord, property owner learns that they're in treatment, not that they're using, that they're in treatment, they throw them out. When their employer finds that they're in treatment, they terminate them. Now you can say, wait a minute, isn't that against the law? Yeah. But what does that mean for that individual? What are they going to have to do? They got to go, they got to tell their story to a whole group of people, they got to, in this public, some public venue, have a conversation about struggling with opiate addiction? So I was doing this presentation on opiates and afterwards I, I got down off the stage and there were two moms, so, sitting there. Both had lost a son in the previous six months to a opiate overdose. And what they shared with me, and it was, it was painful for me to hear and it had to have been unbearable for them, was the sense of shame that they felt when they shared how their sons died. Imagine you're dealing with that loss personally and all of the permutations that you could think of as a, as a parent. And then struggling with your own stuff around how and then having to feel shame about how somebody died. So it's getting a little bit better, but we have a long way to go. And it's difficult to embrace people because nobody really knows what to say, because there are no things to say to a parent who's lost a child and, you know, other than, I'm, I'm here for you. And I think as a community, we need to recognize that whether it's the five thousand people in Chittenden County or the twenty-seven to fifty-five thousand people statewide, we have a lot of people who are really suffering in our community right now. And each one of us, each one of us has an affirmative obligation to do something to ease that, whether that's writing a letter to the editor to talk about what's being done, having a suggestion, an innovation about how to do something different and putting that out there. But you know, there's that expression from the sixties, you're either part of the problem or you're part of the solution. And I, I truly believe that groups like this, who are willing to have this conversation and then, you know, not just say, okay, Bob, thanks for coming and we'll get on to our next thing, but to think about it and then have a conversation amongst yourselves about what does this mean for our community? What is the CSSU community doing and what can it do, what might it do to help address this? Because we're not going to solve this as treatment providers. We're already dealing with the casualties. The law enforcement is not going to be able to do this. We can't arrest our way out of this. And this is not going away. One of the things that, so, you know, there's a sine, sine curve, S-I-N, and for years there were two, can't quite do this, but two opposing sine curves. So when you thought about drugs of abuse and what was impacting the United States, our community the most, you'd see there'd be a peak period in which depressants were the primary drug of abuse and then over time it would go down and then it would peak back up. And I'm talking over, you know, like the last forty years. And the, the corresponding one, so when this one was on the high point, this one would be on the low point, of the stimulants. So, you know, you've got depressant stimulants and then they'd cross over and that would be, and that's when we were dealing with the cocaine issues here, whatever. This current opiate thing has outlasted that cycle. And we still have some cycles. We still see an increase in hallucinogens every fall as students enter a different environment at the university level, at the high school level, they're going to try hallucinogens and then it tapers off and then there's a very small percentage that continue during the year. But this opiate thing has hung on and they're really, it, it would be naive to think that we're on a down cycle yet. We're just not seeing it. We're just not seeing it. When we have forty new folks showing up, looking for clean needles every month, that's suggesting that we're not there yet. So, I appreciate being able to talk with you and I am absolutely willing to try to answer any questions you might have. Or if you want to make an observation that you want me to hear. You know, you didn't like what I had to say.
So I think, I want to ask a question, but first I just want to say something, because I can't stress enough, like the last few paragraphs of what you said about how, you know, we, I think in our situation, we should do our best to reduce the stigma and talk about it and realize that these aren't characters of movies, these are real people struggling with real problems. And it's, you know, it's, it's amazing to hear how hard these people want to get out of the situation. It's not like any of the stereotypes.
So what you're basically saying is, I could have limited my comments to about four minutes. And I hear you and I'm going to take that under advisement.
No, no, that's, wait, no, because there was a comma there. Referring to an earlier part of your conversation.
You know, speaking of commas, I was always taught that, you know, when you're talking about A, comma, B, comma, and C, you put that comma after the second one, but apparently you don't do that anymore. I just thought I passed the...
No, that's not true. That's a great debate. That's the Oxford, that's the Oxford comma, correct? You always put that comma in, in my opinion.
There is.
When people come, when you get people coming into your program, how are you freeing up those spots? Are there people graduating from your program?
So we do. We could discharge potentially as many as thirty or forty people in a month. And so where do they get discharged to? Some people just decide they don't want to be in treatment anymore and they want to go back out on the street. That's relapse. I mean, they're relapsing. Some people, we detox. So methadone maintenance, buprenorphine maintenance, it doesn't, it can also be detoxed, so you can slowly titrate people down and then release them. The long-term research data, so this is going back to the sixties again, sixties and seventies when all the research was done on detox, the short-term outcomes were very, very bad. Something like seventy-five or eighty percent of people relapsed after being detoxed within the first, and I want to say thirty days, but I can't promise that's what it was. But we're dealing with a different clinical population now, times are different, so I, I don't really know. We have some folks who end up spending a little time with the Department of Corrections. We have some people who transfer to a different clinic. So when we were the only clinic in the state, we had more people coming from all over. And so we, we still have some folks who come from, say Franklin Grand Isle County. And they might decide that it's easier for them to go over to the Northeast Kingdom to get treatment than it is to come to, to Chittenden. So we have that kind of rolling over process and we're trying to hire people. We have a workforce challenge. As, you know, you probably know, you know, it's what, three and a half percent unemployment in the state, two and a half percent in Chittenden County. And we need people who have experience working with this population. It's really difficult to get somebody who's, you know, twenty-three years old, you know, fresh-faced, out of college, never dealt with a heroin, an individual who's addicted to opiates, and put them in a situation to be able to counsel them and be effective. So there's a limited pool of skilled folks. And in some ways, some of our programs were kind of cannibalizing each other because we're, you know, stealing. And then the other program, their waiting list goes up because now they're down a staff person. But the goal is to increase staffing capacity, which would then allow us to continue to take more people. And I think UVM MCs agreeing to expand their primary care involvement with suboxone, buprenorphine, is going to make a huge difference. And it's not going to happen overnight, but over the next five to six months, I think we'll be able to see this thing come down pretty substantially. I mean, where we want to get is treatment on demand. If you want to, if you call us today, we're going to say, come in, today. And we, we did a, a study with the Jeffords Center up at, up on the hill and they helped it look, helped us look at some of our processes. And one of the things I mentioned to you that I think it was what, seven days from the point at which we do orientation to first dosing? We want to get to the point at which dosing happens at, at that first day. That's what we want to kind of back up to. Hi.
Hi. I know time is short for you, but I just have a quick question.
How do you mean that?
I mean, I'm looking at the clock that we have.
Just, just checking.
I'm intuitive. But if you want to just comment about these pregnant women, because I think where it really is starting to impact us now, and some of us see it as obvious within the pre-K and K through two, because we have these situations now where the school committees are forced to take, you know, bigger role in social services issues inside the classrooms and our teachers are stressed. I mean, these are everyday issues that are happening today. So as this population grows, as you were saying, we are, as a school committee, I think, going to be forced to have more concrete discussions about what's happening outside.
Yeah, it's, one of the things I didn't mention, so, over the last, I think it's three years through twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, every state department except two have increased their funding around allocation of resources for substance abuse, et cetera. The Department of Aging and Independent Living, they actually reduced their funding for this population, which is kind of interesting because we serve a, a big population of folks with developmental disabilities. And, you know, twenty-five years ago, when that, that population was primarily individuals who were being de-institutionalized from Brandon, we didn't deal with substance abuse as an issue at all. Today, we have a population of folks with developmental disabilities who legitimately and rightly have grown up in the community. And they are now presenting with the same kinds of problems that everybody else in the community has, including opiate addiction, which, and I know that special ed is a big challenge for schools. The other department besides Dale was Department of Education, they spend virtually nothing on, on this issue. Now, I'm not condemning them, they have a role and a focus and Department of Health has a role and focus and Department of Mental Health, substance abuse has a role and focus. But it speaks to the historic reality and, you know, I think if we can get to a place at which we recognize in our community that we have families who are struggling with this, and it is going to require some rethinking about how we provide certain... this, and it is gonna require some rethinking about how we provide certain kinds of services, I'm not sure it has to necessarily cause a substantial increase in costs, but it may require a redeployment of some resources in terms of how you offer supports. It's, every mom or dad who is struggling in recovery, whether it's with alcohol, or cocaine, or opiates, does not need to lose custody of their children, but they need support, and they need safety measures in place to help them. And, you know, we have a terrible situation, and absolutely some families, Department of Children and Families, need to do that horrible thing of taking a family and tearing it apart for the safety of the children. But the reality is, so many of the folks that we work with in our business as adults have struggled with trauma as children, and one can only imagine what the trauma of being separated from your family, however dysfunctional it is. I mean, you know, you can see children reaching as, as a social worker has to remove them from the home, and the parent tortured and crying, that's there, that's there forever for them. But you're right, it is gonna change the dynamic for schools and for our community organizations, you know, the other organizations in our community that, you know, whether it's the Y who works with kids and families, or it's the Lund Center, or some other social service organization, it's changing the dynamic about how they can allocate resources.
We're gonna have to, we can talk all night on this.
Yes, we could.
Thank you very much, that was...
Okay.
Just before I adjourn, just two quick things. One, I guess I would like to challenge the CD board, next to the board, seated board, to, you know, take up Mr. Bick's challenge to actually do something about it, maybe find some strong community members who have time on their hands to be part of those kind of committees, but it's one of the most important things. And finally, final word, I just, as I leave the CSSU board for last time, I really, I cannot say enough about our CSSU staff. You guys are all brilliant and hardworking, and it's been a total honor and a pleasure to work with every one of you. But before we go, I do want to have a special thanks to Megan, who's doubled her workload for the last, you know, six weeks or so, and so you've done a marvelous job, and we really appreciate you stepping up to the challenge to try to backfill Elaine while she's been out. So thank you very much, we appreciate it. And we stand adjourned.